Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. At this time, I'd like to call the December 17th, 2012 Planning Board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda this evening is, are the minutes of the December 11th meeting? Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I have not received any comments from anybody. Do you want to table this next week to we?
Oh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are tabled. The next item on the agenda is approval not required. Mr. Curry, I don't think there are any.
There are none.
Okay, thanks, sir. I need a motion, Pat, maybe from you, to take the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club definitive plan out of order.
Okay. I move that we take the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club definitive plan out of order.
Where did we collect that taking itself out of order?
Okay. Have a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The definitive plan for the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Mr. Secretary, could, well, Paul, would you like to read this one for us?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We have a draft motion in front of us. You don't have it?
No.
All right, now one last, Pat to read it.
Okay, I move that the planning board vote to approve the application of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Inc., under Article IV Definitive Plans, Chapter 305 Subdivision Regulations of the Town of Falmouth, for a plan entitled, "Subdivision Plan of Land Prepared for Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Inc., 203 and 205, Carrot Shop Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Prepared by BSS Design, dated October 25th, 2012, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: This application seeks to subdivide 24.4 acres into two lots and continue to utilize the gravel driveway as it currently exists. The planning board finds this acceptable, given the restrictions on future development found below. Finally, the board finds that no road construction is necessary and shall not require any surety. Waivers: The planning board waives Article VI Design Standards and Article VII Construction Standards of the subdivision rules and regulations as it pertains to the frontage depicted on the above referenced plan. Conditions: One, no further subdivision of Lots 1 or 2 shall be permitted without a modification of this decision under Massachusetts General Law C. 41, Section 81W. Two, no additional building shall be permitted to be constructed on Lots 1 or 2 without a modification of this decision under Massachusetts General Law C. 41, Section 81R. Three, prior to definitive plan endorsement, the applicant shall submit an electronic copy of the above referenced plan as a portable document file, PDF format.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I think that the conditions are acceptable to me.
Any other discussions?
How many people went to the visit the site?
Site visit? We had, we needed to do it on our own today. And/or you've been by it before, or into the Rod and Gun Club or something, so everybody's familiar with it?
Yes, the, could I ask the town planner?
Yeah, sure.
If we've not all met out there, what were we going to be told about this, other than...
It's just taking a view. You know, here are the plans, here's a view, so you can see what's out there, and related to the plan that's in front of you. That's all, that's all we do this one.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Just a real, I believe I understand it completely, but it's a simplification. They are dividing it into two different lots with no changes, and if they make any changes at all, they have to come back to us again. That's what I understood.
Yes, Doug?
Just that, after visiting today, my initial concern, I have been to the Rod and Gun Club, but never paid a lot of attention to the skeet club portion of it. The buildings are small, there's not a significant sized building where people can meet, so my previous concern about the fire hydrant, I don't think is warranted, and there's a fire hydrant down the road. The fire department apparently can get there pretty well, so I think I'm fine with it all.
Okay. Other comments?
Okay, I have one, one or two. I asked our planner, Mr. Curry, to explain to us what a recreation use, land use exemption is, so that we understand that, and how long does it run?
The properties have what's known as a Chapter 61B tax status as recreational property. I understand it runs for as long as, you know, the property owner wants to maintain that tax status, and that, just like the land on Route 151 that's owned by CLSV, golf courses, have this 61B taxing status. The town gets a first right of refusal should they want to sell the property. That's what the reference was in the staff report and Attorney Morninghand's comments at the hearing.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at the staff report, Brian, and I just wanted to make sure that we covered all of the open items that had been checked off there the last time when we received this. The coastal pond, wildlife corridor, it says no new construction, so those are no longer open items, is that right?
Right, there's no, the staff report just highlights what is implicated, but we simply stayed because there's no construction contemplated. There's nothing to do in terms of conditions.
And no new construction, okay. And then setbacks, see the note below, and we talked about the way that currently existing urban construction is anticipated. Okay. The width and alignment of the road, it appears that the one of Butter had no issues with the road as it is and was not interested in having it widened. Mr. and Ms. Moniz and her husband. Let's see. The fire hydrant issue, Doug has spoken to that. And then waivers, of course, we waived all of the, all of the construction and design standards and the construction standards, because no, no construction is going to be proposed. My only comment about the entire situation is that at no time was there any reference or information received from the skeet people. It was all, since they're going to be using the facility just as much as the road and just as much as the other organization, as to, you know, the Rod and Gun Club has capped their membership at 300. We don't know anything about the skeet organization and how big they're going to get, and what, if they're going to grow, or whatever they're going to do with their, with their portion of the property. And so I had, I had concerns about that, but we'd heard nothing from them, and I'm sure that they're aware that we're, that this subdivision is occurring, and that they chose not to represent themselves if there's not an issue with it. That's my supposition. Those are my comments. Any other comments from anyone? If not, I'll entertain the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. You have a voice? Now, I need a motion to revert back to our agenda.
Get re-return to the regular agendas.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, thank you. All right. We now are down to discussion of the wind energy system bylaw. Marlene was kind enough to send us a couple of memos, a repeat of one memo and a new memo, which I hope answered Jim's questions. And I do believe that Brian had one or two other comments he was going to make here before we vote to move this forward to Springtown meeting.
We made all those changes that we had discussed at the last meeting, included the final form. I won't go through them all, but, you know, we took out those commas like on the first page, and cleaned it up where you put in, in business to districts only on the first page. Cleaned it up, made some font changes to the footnotes so you could see them better. Marlene sent you some information on some of the issues and discussions we had with regards to the model bylaw. I made one substantive change on page six to hopefully address some of the concerns the board has with regards to sound and setbacks. I took the language, if you look under 166H to setbacks, the version you had before under safety setback had that language, that larger setback might be required by the board if you find information that supports it. I didn't have that language under sound setback. So what I've done is I removed that language and placed it as a new paragraph C here at the bottom. So it pertains to both the safety and the sound setback. So if you find some information that fulfills the intent of the safety or sound setbacks based on manufacturer or industry standards under the turbine that's under review, then the board has the latitude.
Okay.
So if you find some modulation, or if you don't, you start the bidding at eight, but you reserve the right to go lower. And I think that way we're not chasing, what is it, eight, is it six, is it five? What is it? We'll take it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yes. I can't find it.
Page six, the middle of page six.
The highlighted section.
See?
Anything else, Brian?
And then, we had a lot of discussion on the last page, eight, paragraph seven, because I, I thought I heard the board say something. I just put it back the way it was. You voted last time, poll of complaints and inquiries, that was the language you voted at the town meeting. I made no changes to it. Let's just go with what you had before. Town meeting didn't raise it as an issue, I didn't come up at precinct meetings, so let's, let's go with that original language.
So that, that sentence beginning with complaints under number seven is reinstated?
Right, we, I, I made, it was my fault, confused the issue there, I just put it back the way it was.
That's okay.
Otherwise, you want, you can send this to the annual warrant, but I need your vote tonight.
Right. Brian, do you have your copy that you're looking at right now? Is it incorporated all of the changes that you just talked to us about?
Yes.
Okay, can we all get a copy of that? What's the date on that?
This is drafted 12/13/12.
Okay. Oh, it's in our packet? Excuse me, I always look for it on the, on my computer.
Yeah, it's dated 12/13/12, incorporates all those changes.
Great, okay. All right, our last, your last chance, ladies and gentlemen, to make comments on the wind turbine bylaw, wind energy systems bylaw, I guess we're calling it, before we ask Mr. Curry to submit it as an article for the Springtown meeting. Doug? Did you want to say something first? Oh, I'm curious, could you point out the changes that were made about the sound that we discussed?
If you look, what we just talked about on page six?
No, not that, but I think that one of the emails from Marlene was defining how our bylaw was in line with the GDP standards and so forth.
Right, that's on, that's on page five, under sound impact analysis, five B. She deconstructed our bylaw as compared to the model bylaw. Found that in her memo that we're actually either stricter or what makes sense to maintain, in other words, maintain the language you see there. I know there was some language to take the model bylaw and insert it, but as she explains, it's counterproductive. And I don't have it for memo in front of me, I'm sorry about that.
I guess I misunderstood the email, because I was reading the thing she said, and it looked like she had taken excerpts from it and incorporated into ours.
Just the opposite, the arguments made were that, some of the things here are actually stronger, that the model bylaw, or actually I recall, is too ambiguous when it says consult with the department. Does that mean we're giving away your special permitting authority to the department? A lot of those issues are unresolved. Where the model bylaw, put up by the Department of Energy Resources, actually has some language in there. I'm going to talk to the state planner at the Department of Housing and Community Development, who's in charge of these things, because there's some information in that model bylaw that if it's gone out statewide, my understanding is just kind of inconsistent with what my understanding of the zoning act allows. Like, it defines a special permit use, wholly inconsistent with what a special permit use really is, so. To make a story, short, we took a look at the model bylaw, tried to plug it into the sound impact analysis, as discussed, and we found that our recommendation is, we recommend that you leave the language alone, that the model bylaw doesn't really comport with what you want. It's either not structured properly, less stringent, or inconsistent.
You okay, Doug, or are you...
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I really understand that.
If we vote this tonight, Brian, can we get it on our website so that people can, we can tell people that approach us and, and people who call you will be able to look at it without having to come in and get a hard copy, or and/or can study it at home or whatever? Can we do that? And it would be listed as, would the word draft be dropped then, and, no, not until it's adopted by town meeting? Okay.
I think you put it up as draft, because it'll be, well, it'll be an article, so I guess the word draft will be deleted, but it's, you have a public hearing on it, so you can amend it.
Right.
It's not, it's not cast and stuck.
So could we say, like, proposed article or something?
Sure.
Something like that? Everybody okay with that?
It's still a draft.
So you have a hearing on it.
It's a draft until, I think, we adopt it.
Until the town meeting votes it, it's still a draft, because you make a floor amendment at a town meeting, so.
Will there be another public hearing before...
Yes, well, this just goes to the warrant, and you'll hold another public hearing sometime in February.
And then what? If we wanted to pencil in changes before town meeting, we could?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so then if it goes on the town warrant, I mean, on the town website now, I guess we should leave the word draft on it?
Sure, I'll, I'll put proposed article.
Okay, all right.
And that way people know it's proposed. You run out of hearing, you can change it for the warrant, and it gets to town meeting, you get two amendments.
Right. Please, please, yes, really move it. Okay.
I'll second.
Final discussion before we have a hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Congratulations to everybody on the board, and to you, Brian, and Marlene for your help.
Okay, so far, let's go.
The next item on the agenda is the goals and policies of the economic sustainability element for the local comprehensive plan. Pat?
Okay, I believe as a board, we have already passed for the warrant, the goals and policies for the water and sewer element and for the energy element. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have. Okay. So we have before you tonight for consideration the goal statement for the economic sustainability element and the policies. And if you, have you all looked at it, or you want to take a minute to, to read it first?
Honestly, I've looked at most of it, and I said, oh, I've already seen this.
Ah, so you didn't get to the end.
You missed the back.
You better read it.
I'm going to discuss it first, and then, Pat, you want to lead the discussion?
Sure. As you will recall from our discussion, and I'm simply being repetitive here, on the goal, we want to keep it to one, maximum two goals for each one of the elements, and we want the goals and the policies to live forward way into the future, so you're not going to get specific on those. In our current local comprehensive plan, a number of the policies read like action items. We don't want to do that, because town meeting has to vote on the goals and the policies. They do not have to vote on the action items. So what you've got in front of you has been the result of quite a lot of discussion with the Economic Sustainability Committee. Jim, Bob, and I have been the three people, and Mike Galasso as well has been at most of the meetings. So this is the product of principally the four of us and Marlene. You'll see that you have one goal and three policy statements. We have not yet developed a narrative, which we will bring in front of you at the time that it is developed. We have, as of the last meeting on Wednesday, a fairly comprehensive list of action items that we have not sliced and diced and remixed as we've done the others, and as soon as we're done with that, we will bring that in front of you. This is a really broad element, because we have identified five main drivers for our economy, and we are trying to look at the things that can be done to enhance those drivers. A lot of, the easier things to do is to look at the tourism industry. There are a number of things that we can do with the medical group, too, that we can When you get down to the marine, there's not much we can do, and they indicated that to us. So we will bring these action items to you at that time, but right now, this is what we're asking you to vote to go to town meeting, and I suspect that sometime in January, you'll see the action items, so that the board can look at those.
I just make a little suggestion.
Sure.
The middle of the policy statement. Shall, shall provide, I would say shall provide and/or contribute to the necessary infrastructure. Because if we're talking about infrastructure providing, we're talking about public work projects, and there's a lot of things that we might want to be doing where we would want to be getting available grants, so.
That's what it says, though, Rich.
No, it says it shall provide the necessary, if we're providing, that means we're paying for it. I'd be, we're going on.
Working in partnership with Barnstable County, the Commonwealth, and the federal government. That's the modifying clause that says...
Yes, but...
We're looking for something else here, too.
Okay.
And that's how we're anticipating. Either...
The land for instance, that's what we...
Okay.
I mean, it's on our land, but, you know.
Yeah, well, no, I do disagree.
Building the bridge, or building the dock.
I disagree with the way you interpret it, but I don't know. What about you guys who worked on the statement, the rest of it?
I really have no problem with it.
You're just being rich, huh?
You guys did the work, so why don't I just say, I move this.
That was too easy.
All right, I need a second.
Just another comment?
I'll, I'll entertain discussion after I get a second. A second? Okay, now discussion.
Well, I just wanted to mention to Rich and others, that although this is a very concise few paragraphs, we took an awful lot of time, meeting with all the stakeholders in the vicinity, in the whole town. We went, we met with the educational community, the medical community, all the different scientific communities. There was, we met probably 15 times with the different groups, and listened to their needs, and made sure that, that they would all fit under this umbrella of goals. Now, the real structure comes in when, once the goals are set up, a town meeting approves it, then the town manager and other groups, now we're going to have the action items that actually work to those goals, but those change on every year. But we did take an awful lot of time, talking with all the stakeholders and listening to their needs and what they wanted from the town, and that's how this evolved. It wasn't something we just whipped up. There was hours and hours of interviews. That's, thank you.
Other comments? Yes, Paul?
I just have a brief, but I think important comment. I think what was done was very good, and it covers a lot of bases. My only suggestion is on the goal statement at the beginning, we talked about providing high quality water supply. I suggest we add the term and distribution to meet the present needs, because it's one thing to provide high quality water at the plant, but it really has to get to the residents. In some cases, we have some very long pipelines, like on Galloway's Hold.
Oh, we're not doing, we're not doing water tonight. We're just doing, we're just doing economic, the last one, the last element of the power.
I apologize. You got it, Jim.
Those others, we've already, we've already discussed and voted. We're just, we're just talking about the economic sustainability element. Any other comments, questions?
No.
Okay, I would just, my only comment is that on page two, my two, my page two, but it's, it's under the, under the state, the goal statement, where it's, the second sentence, where it says, "Growth shall be responsibly managed to ensure that the local economy is sustainable, dah 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 dah." And so, growth shall be responsibly managed, so that's saying everybody that is involved will be responsible. I mean, we're not naming somebody to responsibly manage this. We're not saying that the economic EDIC, or the planning board, or anybody, we're just, that's just sort of like saying, everybody pay attention and be responsible. Is that, is that, is that what you, what you were saying there, basically? Yes, Jim?
We took that into consideration, and in every single action item that's going to be falling into these, below these policies of goals, is going to be a specific group in town that's responsible for those actions.
Okay.
And they're not, we're not bringing those forward at this time, and they're not going to go to town meeting, but they will be approved by the town manager and the other groups as we go along, and that's the whole part of the process, but that is understood.
Okay, I got it.
This policy statement is guiding those groups.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right, I'm fine with that. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we're going to vote on the economic sustainability element, goals and public policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. I can only thank you and congratulate the three of you for working, spending the time on it. Maybe you could tell us what the next, the next goal, the next element would be?
Okay, this is probably going to take through the end of January, I would expect, to complete this, and then we will, as we are thinking right now, go on to affordable housing.
And that would be for the fall town meeting next year?
One hopes. As you know, we're not pushing things, you know, beyond the time, or before the time that they're ready.
I'm going to ask one other question. If town meeting votes affirmative on these three, three that we're bringing to them in the spring, we now have an old local comprehensive plan, and we also have three new elements, three elements of a new comprehensive plan. So if we ask people to refer to the local comprehensive plan, if they speak to us, or they speak to the Community Preservation Committee, or speak to anybody in town, what should our, what would our instructions be to them?
Once these are voted by town meeting, they become the operational document, so they would supplant those segments in the current local comprehensive plan.
Okay.
That has to be made clear.
Yeah.
Of course it does. Of course it does.
It's like when you say something, you've got the same title as something else, and a window comes up and says, the document is already saved and has overrun the plans. What are you gonna do? Do you wanna replace it? Do you wanna vote?
Yeah, these would have to replace, and I, I'm not sure the process on the town's website.
Those elements dated, like right now, they're all dated April 2005.
Yeah.
These elements would be dated April 2013.
Got it.
And the other elements would still have the old five date.
Okay, fine. All right, answer my question. Is that it then, Pat?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you. Let's see here, the next item on the agenda are releases. I don't believe there are any.
I saw one, there's one in your folder, or correspondence folder.
Correspondence folder.
It's from an attorney regards of a piece of property on...
Chelsea Lane?
That's it, thank you. They would ask for a confirmatory release of covenant for this lot on Chelsea Lane. All the paperwork you have right there, it was released, I believe, back in 2000, I think was the date there around?
Well, I've got one, I've got a release from a covenant dated 1992.
Okay, that goes way back then. So for some reason, this individual can't find that on record, it probably is, but they're looking for a confirmatory release, because it was, based on that evidence, like the record time before, that you vote, that you can confirm that vote you took in 1992. That's all you do.
Confirm, confirm the vote that the planning board at that time...
Vote, right.
Voted.
Voted in...
We didn't do it.
Right. That's why it's called a confirmatory release.
Let me read, let me read the, oh, Jim, you can read the letter, please.
Thought we should at least hear this, yes. Planning board, Town of Falmouth, 69 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. 0254, regarding Chelsea Lane, Falmouth, formerly known as 855 T-Ticket Highway, to whom it may concern. Please be informed that I represent Stephen P. Peters of Falmouth, Mass., who purchased five Chelsea Lane from Mark Service. I completed the title examination at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds on December 2nd, 1992, and made diligent search to look for a release of the covenant, but did not find one recorded. On December 10th, 2012, I met with, met, I went to Town Hall Planning Board and was given a copy of the release, a copy of which is enclosed. In order to clear the record title of the subject premises, I respectfully asked that the board issue a confirmatory release and mail it to me at P O Box 247 Match B 02649, so I can record the same at the registered deeds. Thank you cordially, Stephen B. Murphy. S A S E for your convenience. Enclosed, please find the first copy of the planning board's covenant.
Okay. Does it really have a stamp on it?
I made sure it has a stamp addressed, self-addressed stamp in it.
And it was signed by Brian A. Curry?
How about him?
I move it.
Second.
Okay, I'll move it. What, what did you call it again, Brian, or what?
It's a confirmatory, you're confirming that.
A confirmatory release.
Confirming that...
That means is Mr. Peters' first lawyer neglected to record the release.
Same lawyer.
Didn't want to pay the fee.
Yes, maybe he gets the money back from... Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next item on, in correspondence is a letter from Lawyer Robbins, Assistant Town Clerk. Subject Campaign Finance Report Due. Your candidate or treasurer, this would be anyone who's going to be running for Planning Board in May, I believe. And so who would that be if you could, who is, you are Pat and Paul, are you, were you doing one year?
One year.
So you will, you would have to run again this May, if you chose to. Okay. So this letter is, references you, and it basically says, Campaign Finance Law mandates that all, that a civil penalty of $25 per day of up to $5,000 ought to be assessed personally against a candidate for any report that is filed after the due date. Okay, so if you are going to raise, your report must disclose all campaign finance activity from the day following the ending date of the last report filed by you through December 31st, 2012. So that'd be up through this, the end of this month. So a copy of M 102 form is enclosed for your use. Now, if you want a copy of this, usually the planning board members, it's all zeros, because we don't raise money to, but if you should choose to do so, you, you should get a copy of this from...
Joyce.
From, from, from the office.
Joyce has copies.
Joyce has, so even if you, even if you didn't raise money, hey, you still have to fill this thing out, yeah?
Yes, you do.
Okay. So, so anyway, so be advised, Paul.
If someone were to send out a postcard, for example, or pay for it themselves, is that the same category?
Unless you raised money, I think.
If you raised money...
See, reported as campaign finance activity, all funds and in-kind contributions received, expenses paid and liabilities incurred. Expenses paid, I suppose, I don't know. Maybe ask Mr. Duffy.
If someone paid your hotel room...
Yeah, right.
Or if you say, if you gave an IOU...
Right.
If you raised funds, then you need to report those things on that form. If you have any questions, check with the town clerk or Mr. Duffy.
Okay.
I think, I'm just saying, I think it relates to your own expenses. If you get the money, you spend the money on signs or bumper stickers.
Yeah, something to promote your candidacy.
Right.
Okay, in life, you spend money like that, or only if you raised funds to spend that?
I'm not that familiar with the campaign finance law. I just know you have to sign under the paints of perjury with regards to what you did as a political candidate. The forms are available in the office for you to sign. I think if you have any questions, you should check in with your own attorney or Mr. Duffy probably help you.
The town clerk.
Or the town clerk will help you too. I'm just not that familiar enough with the finance.
Let me, let me read what the, the form says. It's very, very brief. I certify that I am a candidate for municipal office. I certify that I have not received any contributions, made any expenditures, or incurred any obligation during this reporting period, and do not have a campaign fund in existence. I certify that I do not have a political committee. So this is like a, this is, this is the one that says, you didn't raise any money and you're not doing anything.
It says you didn't spend any money, that's not campaign. If you're gonna checkbook campaign, are you on checkbook?
I think you get a different form then, don't you? Because this says, pursuant, I certify that I'm a candidate, I certify that I have not received any contributions. So if you do receive contributions, then it must be a different form, right?
Yeah.
You gotta report.
If you receive money, you gotta report.
We have, we have a piece of correspondence from the town clerk. It relates to you as political candidates. Copies are available for you, or we can email you copies. You need to fill it out. If you have any questions about it, check with your own counsel, your own accountant. I think town council will help you, I know the town clerk will help you. I won't help you, because I know nothing about this stuff.
All right, you guys okay with that? You can go to the town clerk or maybe you can...
Right.
Yeah, I'm just puzzled on this, because every year, we get something that we all have to sign, whether we ran or we didn't run for office, that says, we didn't raise any money, and I'm suspicious that that might be what this is.
I thought that was about gifts.
I don't know, but I know every year it comes up, and every year it's like, why are we signing this?
We're saying, because we're elected officials.
I understand, but that seems to be like when we're running, but we still are expected to sign it anyway. I suspect we're gonna have to back from Joyce to say, sign this.
Whether we're running or whether we're just sitting.
I don't think so.
Yeah, right.
Maybe we can give some clarification from the town clerk, and maybe you could pass that on to his grant. Between the two things, between this and what, and that other form we signed?
Sure.
You know, the thing about no more than $50 gift and all that business.
The $50 gift is a conflict, conflict of interest law.
Yeah.
Every year, you sign a form, I sign a form, sorry, every year you sign a form about, you know, you understand what the conflict of interest law is.
Right.
This form is purely state law with regards to campaign finance.
Campaign financing.
And that you make this declaration, the town clerk gathers them and often goes to the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, okay. All righty. Committee reports. You already gave us your, your committee report tonight, Pat. The, any other committee report, representative committee reports? After a joint meeting with the selectmen tonight, you know that the community preservation committee is involved with the study that's going on about Spring Bar Road in that area. And we will have for spring town meeting, I may have mentioned this before, I believe, only one, one application for, for funding in spring town meeting, and that will have to do with the preservation of the silo at the property that 300 Committee owns on Chandler Row.
Conne Messe Row.
I'm sorry?
On the Conne Messe Row.
Right, on the Conne Messe Row, right. New business, anything that someone would like brought up? Our next meeting, Brian, will be when?
It will be the first Tuesday in January, which would be, I think, the eighth?
Okay.
I think it's the eighth.
Right. I, I, while you were out in your office, I asked Joyce to look at your calendar, because I wanted to know about the second Tuesday of, in January, which I understand is going to be the final report from the alternative committee on the existing wind turbines. It's gonna be on Tuesday night at the library, at least it's scheduled that so far, and I thought it would be nice if we could attend that.
Yes.
And we were supposed to be off that night, so it, it worked quite well. So we'd be first...
It'll be, it'll be 15.
Okay, and then the, the third, the third Tuesday, we'll meet again.
Yes. And then, a question, if we're all there, what does that do?
Doesn't do anything, we don't participate. We're just going to...
Yeah, if you're, if, if there's a chance meeting, just sit there and listen, don't deliberate.
Yeah.
But it'd be like if you all, three or four of you showed up, that you're, you went to the opening of Leniz Rob.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I think we're, we're okay there. I think we'll all, we'll all, we, we would all want something, kind of, Dove?
As far as future items, is it almost time to discuss that vision mapping again?
It is. I'm gonna sit down after this holiday season and try and map out some tasks here, yeah, get that? And that is on the horizon, probably for the first three months and 13, year 13.
Rich?
Yeah, I don't know if this is true business, real business, but I would not say it's final. I have this explanation here, where it says total number of the meeting, task number five. I mean, I thought it was very confusing.
You talk about the schoolwork that we discussed with the...
Yeah, yeah. But it was sent by town officials. They talked about total number of meetings of this task number five. One for project disagreement, one with the CPC, one with the planning board, one unassigned to be determined, one with town officials now, one with the town officials, I think they should be more specific.
They are going to be.
Well, I asked them to do that.
Well, this is, yeah.
It's not on our agenda for tonight.
But fair, town officials, you know...
You still want to talk about it?
I asked them to be more specific.
I think we could talk about it, yeah, because it was partly on our joint meeting agenda.
The other new business, the other item of new business, I'd like to bring to the board's attention, is the 31st of January. I asked Joyce to send an email out to you, that's a proposed meeting with the zoning board of appeals. So if you can check...
Joint meeting?
Be a joint meeting. We're actually thinking about having a little bit of a joint training session...
Okay.
...on some of the roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards, together with any other agenda items that the boards want to discuss. So if you, in the meantime, you can think of something, we'll have a discussion of the zoning board of appeals, bring it back to another planning board meeting in January, we can formulate the agenda for the 31st.
Is that a Tuesday or a Wednesday?
That'd be a Thursday night.
Thursday, that's, that's their meeting.
That's their meeting, okay. But what we try to do is such that, you know, you wouldn't be meeting on the 20th, no? You would meet with your chair.
Yes, for future business.
You probably don't have to have a joint meeting exciting medical marijuana shots. Someone put...
Who is?
We're gonna need a joint meeting.
With who is who?
The board of health.
Okay.
You're on television.
That's good.
I'm not, no.
That's good.
Bunch of dandy hippies.
Too bad, Frank, you can't erase that, can you?
No, I'm gonna make it up.
New business. I, I would like, I would like at some point in the, in the real near future to, for us to discuss whether or not, where, well, not whether or not, but well, hopefully we will, on, on what staff reports should we now begin to include applicants referring to the local comprehensive plan when they come before us? I'd like, I'd like us to consider that, I mentioned it before. I think it's important to give, to give that document the significance that it deserves, and it would involve a little bit of background work, I mean, by the applicant to examine how their proposal dovetails with the local comprehensive plan. So I'd like to, I'd like to start that beginning of the year, if we can, if at all possible, but I think we need to discuss it first. There was one other thing I was thinking of, but I can't remember. Correspondence, we've gone over. I need a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.